Forty as well. We have a quorum. Myself and Joe are on Zoom and Makita Keegan is in the room in Town Hall.
Great, thank you. And at this point, we'll have the clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We received one correspondence from the public since the last planning board meeting. And that is of a nature specific that the town planning office would respond, not the clerk on behalf of the board.
Thank you. And for public comment, Peter, do we have any public comment online?
This is the time for a public comment for anybody online with you. Oh, I see one person with their hand raised. With nobody in the room, I will give it to Joan Goff Friday. Joan, can you please unmute yourself? I will ask you to unmute yourself and please step forward.
Oh, now I can. Okay. Joan Goff Friday, Winchell Road, Ashland. I don't want to take a lot of your time. I haven't heard the new proposal yet, and I'm sure you're working on the best plan you can for Ashland. But I want to go on record as saying that I feel very strongly that the towns should band together and fight this. I feel the state is already mandating way too much for the towns. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And the next topic on our agenda is the MBTA zoning update. Okay, we're going to hold on just one moment since our Zoom got lost.
Okay, so town planner Peter Matzek and beside me tonight is?
Alvaro Sparso, City System Planner.
And so Alvaro and I have been working really hard diligently since the last spring to come up with a plan that suffices and meets the MBTA law, zoning law and the criteria. And so what we're coming down with is kind of not a new proposal, well, a little bit of an edited proposal from the spring town meeting. I was able, you know, we, Alvaro and I have been for the last couple of months have been following updates. I think from the last, from the spring, we said we're going to kind of wait what happens with these two 40Bs. Then obviously, we are still waiting on further information on. And so with that said, we're still trying to put together a plan that meets the principles of what, how we kind of set off last spring, obviously, to take into consideration what Ashland has already previously zoned, to obviously look at what Ashland has permitted, right? And then also to look what, what areas in town make sense with the lowest minimal impact, obviously, to the community. With that said, overall, just as a review, we, the town of Ashland, need to zone for 15% of our total housing. And so that is 1,124 units, just as a fact. Ashland in the 2020 census has 7,400 and, excuse me, about 7,400 units to be precise. So with that said, just to go back, we do need to zone for 1,124 units. This has to be done over 50 acres. 40% indoor 20 of those acres need to be within the MBTA district and/or .5 miles away from the MBTA station. Another fact that needs to be considered is that 50% of the overall zone needs to be contiguous. And so going back to the spring, that was kind of an easy one because we had Cirrus and we had the land area known as Lot Two with UGC, and that checked that box. If we remove UGC from the equation due to that 40B, obviously being in litigation, we don't really know what's, what's going on there. That leaves us the Cirrus parcel, which is the biggest parcel, which is about 28 acres, right? And so that is one of the hurdles that has been one of the most biggest, I would say, one of the most identifiable challenges to kind of, to kind of, or indoor hurdles to kind of meet. So with that said, what we have presented tonight are a few maps. Alvaro, do you want to run through the maps?
Yeah. So I guess just to point out parcel A that is on this light green color that's fully serious. So that's kind of like the parcel that we are looking at and counting on definitely having on this proposal because it meets the .5 mile radius requirement within the MBTA station. And if we're looking to zone on a max of 56 acres, that will also meet a, that would also be a contiguous district. So just kind of like repeating what Peter was saying and just mentioning it, that before we were looking at all this part of the RTE, sort of right here where my mouse is, that was overall 77% of our proposal in the spring. Since we are removing this light blue area around the Cirrus parcel, of course, that acreage decreases. And so for that reason, we are looking at Cirrus as the main parcel to maintain that contiguous. And the maximum of overall land that we will be looking at zoning is 56 acres. Parcel B is 100 Chestnut. We understand that that has been permitted since construction, so it's a feasible site to rezone and make a part of this, this project. C is Pond Street. We included on the last proposal and we still continue to look at it as a potential parcel and good option for this proposal. We mentioned D, just to kind of like show it again, but that one is UGC and overall the RTDF, RTDA district and part of the RTE. But like Peter said, because of the fact that it's in litigation and there's a 40B permitted there, is age restricted. We're thinking that it could be less of a potential option because of all those factors. I know that in the spring we talked about potentially Pleasant Street. And so we revisit that option again because we are losing a lot of acres in this area by taking this out. And I know that one of the things that we were looking at is how much actually that could be built or how much actually could be built there by right or special permit. And so we went deep into zoning there and we'll, we'll be showing a little bit of what we model. The zoning over there is through floor area ratio. So because of that, it was a little harder to see how exactly what will be the number of units since there's not really standard square footage of a unit that you can just optimize and kind of like mention it. So that's why we have to revisit and model it. But we're looking at that as an option. Parcel F is 10 to 60 Main Street, again, knowing that right now it's been revisited as a, is proposed as a 40B. It's part of the ADDA zoning again that already permits by right housing in there. We also looked at that and we also modeled a potential number of units, how much by right based on the FAR will be provided. We'll be running through those numbers again, but that's kind of like why we included into this. And then parcel G is 61 Waverly Street. That's again, another parcel that has been proposed as a 40B. So when coming down into looking at all the parcel town, we also thought that since that is already been, in the process of being proposed for more housing, we could take a look at including into this overall analysis.
Thank you, Alvaro. So right now, just to kind of take a, just to kind of stop, those are the parcels that we've kind of put together to analyze what could be kind of, what could be kind of meshed together to meet the qualifications. Right now, parcels indoor, I would say A and B, right, which are Cirrus and 100 Chestnut Street, need to be, need to be in the equation. Most importantly, Cirrus needs to be in the equation because it meets requirements that the state law has kind of put forth. Other than that, you can start to kind of build this mold together, right? And in doing so, we can kind of, we can build that mold up and then we can kind of move some pieces around regarding density equations. And obviously, there's pros and cons to every, to every piece. But at this point, I just want to stop. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll start. So the parcel, there's three parcels that are in play of this puzzle that mentioned 40B. One of them is an approved 40B, a friendly 40B, which is parcel D, which is UGC, which understandably is a court thing. But I, I feel like I'm not getting how that really got potentially dropped from this. Like what, what's the argument to drop that versus these 40Bs that aren't approved?
Well, I would say the, the question one has to ask is saying, okay, why would you drop it? Why would you not, right? If we kept it in, right, we would be increasing the density of that parcel by right. So therefore, right now, we have a friendly 40B, which is age restricted at 180 units, right? Which is in litigation. It's been in litigation for the past two years, right? If we move that into the equation, and that is 17.98 acres, right? We have to have a minimum density of 15 units. So therefore, that would move the proposed by right use on that property to 270 units.
Can I ask a clarified question, though? So I know that the acreage of that is 17.98. But like if you do all the green, A, B plus C, you're up to 41.66 acres, right? So you only really need whatever, 8.4 left. So why would you need to zone the entire D? Wouldn't you just zone 8.4 acres of it to join the rest of the 50?
I'm sorry, you lost me.
You lost me.
So let me start again. I thought the required acres are 50, five zero. So I'm just kind of trying to do math. So if you add the green, the two greens, plus C, you get to 41.66. I don't have a calculator, but I think that's what it is. So to get to 50, you just need another 8.4 or so, 8.34, something like that. So wouldn't you just take about nine acres out of D to zone it that way and therefore not impact the legality of that project or not risk?
You will technically be impacting it because if you look at the map, right, and then you look at, let's say, the RTE right here, and you see right, like this lane, right? So all everything that is around it, even if it's the seven acres, you already are picking out the project that is UGC. And then immediately when, let's say, we are only looking at 50 acres, like the minimum, we will be looking at a higher density. So we will have to like play with the density on that.
I guess to clarify, basically, if we take nine acres out of that 17 acre property and we make it by right more dense, you're saying the whole project could be at risk over those nine acres that are more dense?
I think it has a possibility of changing.
There is a possibility, I guess, yeah.
And have we sought an opinion from the state or from legal counsel as to whether that would actually be a viable problem? I'm just trying to imagine, you have a friendly 40B over 17 acres and they find out that 8.43 of it can now be high density. Are they really going to change their entire project because there's little sections of it they can make highly dense?
They may.
I feel like we should explore that a little bit.
They potentially could. Just to make a note, that whole parcel known as parcel two is actually 37.97 acres, right? The town of Ashland in with purchasing land within the, purchasing land within that UGC, I mean, excuse me, within the RTD district from the landowner of Lot Two, the town of Ashland is going to get 20 acres back. So that's why there's a differential to the 17 acres that are in parentheses because that's the, I would say, the developable area within that Lot Two. I see a hand raised online, just FYI.
It's going to land up.
But that is a possible possibility, right? Furthermore, we also looked at E, right, which is the Pleasant Street corridor, which is a total of 7.56. The 10 to 60 Main Street project has a total of 6.9 acres. That, both the Pleasant Street and the 1060 Main Street, they do have a FAR of two, which is allowed within a mixed use development. And so that is now kind of opening up the door to the Ashland Downtown Overlay District. The second sheet that you see with everybody, with, with, with information here is actually FAR, examples of FAR. And then the third project that we looked at, just, you know, to put everything in, is the Waverly Street, which would be 13 acres of land. You know, we can move, we, obviously, we're still in the process of looking at things and building the model up to meet that 50 acre goal and the contiguous factor. And obviously, the acres within that five mile district.
Am I reading this?
So the parcel E on Pleasant Street, I definitely, I'm going to just repeat, I have heartburn about that because we rezoned ADDA as recently as 6/2021 at town meeting. So that means it got reviewed. We had an independent consultant. Peter, you were here then. We had a board. We had town meeting vote. And now we're, we're making this more dense with, when it recently got reviewed. Like the, it actually got more dense under that update of the zoning.
No, it did not.
And that, that zoning ADDA requires, it says this should be the most commercial based. So without putting, I know there's a allowable to have some commercial on the first floor, and they particularly say with downtown. So have you explored that with parcel E at all?
Just to back up a minute, the, the change that went to the, the change that happened to the ADDA district was really about design criterias and the update. And no part of that bylaw update didn't actually touch the density, the densities within ADDA. The densities within ADDA go back to, I believe, 2015, which was the last change.
No, I understand. But my point is, in a relatively recent, given our snail's pace of like making changes with government, town government, because that's how it works, democracy's slow. When we revisited in 2021, we didn't say we want it more dense. So the most recent visit, so now this is imposing a density that I, I'm going to stick to say, I'm not saying it shouldn't be more dense. What I'm saying is that should wait for the comprehensive plan process that we're in the middle of. And, and particularly unless we consider the commercial part of the MBTA zoning that we're allowed to do. And I haven't heard anything about that in the proposal.
Could I just clarify one thing there? So when we were looking at the, the bylaws, right, that one was, ADDA was the most challenging really to like compare because it was on FAR. So right now, by FAR, depending of course on what is the square footage of unit that you will use, you could actually make it more dense.
It could be very dense.
It could be very dense, yeah. So basically, what we are looking at is that if we were to move on with this MBTA zoning, we will be limiting at 15 units per acre. And because it's an overlay zoning, you will be allowing for any sort of commercial development to happen still because they can still use the zoning that is under. So like the ADDA overlay and then the industrial zoning on the bottom. So they can use all of those zoning in case that they would like to.
But there is an MBTA 3A that does have a requirement. We could put in commercial. Other communities have done this. So what you're saying is, I get it, it's dealer's choice. Right now, it can stay commercial, just like all of downtown, 10 to 60 Main can stay commercial, or they can decide to do some commercial. And if we do the MBTA, that right now, what you guys are talking about is only residential.
Yes.
But there is an MBTA 3A, they updated it since it was initially passed because communities, they want, we all want our community to be vibrant downtown. So just putting housing with nothing there doesn't make it vibrant, right? The state, that's why they revisited, the 3A. So I, I think putting, given ADA, ADAA, if you read our zoning specifically says that is the heaviest commercial density. When you go B and C, they, they kind of say it's not, we think it's not as important. So that's an A. Like, we shouldn't, we shouldn't give that up. We definitely should not give that up.
Can, can I ask a clarifying question? Do we have any questions from select board before I do?
Yolanda did have her hand.
Why don't we give the select board some question time?
Does anybody from the select board online and or in the room have any questions?
Yolanda, you're on.
Yolanda, I've asked you to unmute.
There we go. Now I can. Thank you. Now I can. So my, I had raised my hand because I had a question slash follow-up. When Anna was talking about parcel C, the UGC parcel, can you have different zoning on the same parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. This would be an overlay district on top, and it would cover. Yep, you can do that.
And then the other thing is in regards to, I mean, I agree with Kate in regards to mixed use. That is something that the MBTA zoning does now allow. Originally, they didn't, but they do support mixed, mixed use. So I would say that for parcel, the parcel on Pleasant Street, we would want to make that mixed use versus just housing because there's already commercial along there. So mixed use on that parcel as well as on the 10 to 60 Main Street makes sense to have mixed use encouraged as well as just housing. And that's really all I got. Thank you. Sorry I was late, had another meeting.
I had a, unless there's other questions online?
No.
Just to clarify, the, the orange and blue on that chart, which I think is very helpful showing density as built or permitted versus MBTA, I just want to make sure I'm interpreting things right. Looking at label F and G, so 1060 Main Street, am I reading it right that it's proposed at 250 units? But if we zone it for the MBTA, the zoning would be for 124?
Yes, it will be 18.
So the practicality of this is, I'm just imagining how this works in practical terms. We had the 40B proposed to us. It's now under review by the state. If we zone it to be 124 units, that project can still get approved at the higher density. It just happens to be zoned for the lower density.
Correct.
Okay. So I feel like that's a win-win right there, me personally. And then the other question, I guess it's the same question for G, same concept. It's being proposed as a 40B at 226, and the zoning would, would be for 199. So again, even if that project is approved, at the higher density, the zoning would be lower than what's approved. Basically, the zoning makes zero impact on the reality. If we zone it for the MBTA, we're still going to get something with more density.
That was kind of like the approach that we were looking at.
And then, just so I'm clear, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, if this 1060 Main Street is approved, is 61 Waverly, are we over the threshold for affordability if 1060 is approved?
No.
No? Okay. So we're still kind of vulnerable to a 40B for, assuming UGC succeeds in its progression?
You know, and I think at this point, you know, UGC, it depends on what UGC does. You know, obviously, we approved that. We got one year of Safe Harbor because it moved our, it moved the SHI needle above, you know, the 1% that it needed to. Because then it pulled building permits, we fell out of Safe Harbor. If UGC ends tomorrow, litigation, they come in and they pull a building permit, then we could, we do have the opportunity. However, it kind of depends on how the other two kind of shake out. And also, we have, you know, 501 Pond Street, which is also 25% affordable. But that's a lit project. It's a, it's not a 40B project. It goes through a different process to get onto the SHI. That doesn't get onto the SHI until a regulatory agreement has been signed and occupancy permits have been issued. So you're just dealing, each project is a different, has a different set of cards or a different set of circumstances. And so you're still, you're still juggling a little bit of everything, including two possible 40Bs that are right now under review at Mass Housing.
Which is F and G, right?
Correct.
So I have a question to Anna, to your comment that it's a win-win because I actually disagree with that. Because right now, for the ADA, AD, ADDA, or at least the versions that have come to us, they're a special permit. And I think you know, serving on the board, how hard, as much as we get beat up sometimes by the public or other people, we work hard to make these projects better. And I can honestly say there's, they've been better, like meaning safer. And I'm not the one to comment about aesthetics, but there's people here that absolutely put a lot of effort into making them. So once this is by right, I, I mean, that painful effort that we go through to make projects better is no longer going to happen for the town.
I guess what I was saying in the win-win is, if I'm the developer and I've got a 40B proposal in front of the state for 250, and we pass MBTA zoning, which only has 124, I don't have any reason to pull out the 40B and come back, in my opinion. So I feel like there's low risk to the town of Ashland. Because the developer is standing in front of the state with high density, and all we did was create less density. So I don't, I don't really see the risk that we would, like, it's not like the developer is going to say, oh, sure, I'll just come back for a by right project with less density.
But we don't know, this is where we were in the spring. We don't know this 40B is going to be accepted. That's the...
But we do know, there was a project at 200 units in front of the planning board that has been withdrawn because it wasn't viable at 200 units.
So I get that there's a risk. Like, all of these things are risky. And maybe what we need to do, and this is a great chart, is kind of, at least for me, what would be helpful is to kind of visualize the risk of each one slightly. So obviously, the green ones, there's very low risk. The project is going to come back because it's happening. Would we all agree on that? Like, it's already standing there.
It's built.
Yeah. So there's that. 501 Pond, has this permit been pulled? Like, are they?
So no, a permit has not been pulled, right? But here's another, you know, risk, risk, right? And obviously, you're, we're talking about risk. Obviously, in 2014, the town of Ashland permitted a elderly residential assisted living center, right? New town, 2024 issues a permit through the planning board for 120 units. With that said, the proposal would be to, obviously, looking at this, and we've kind of looked at this a lot, Alvaro and I, is by right, 501 Pond Street, within the Pond Street Overlay District, right, has the ability to pull permits by right for 81 units, right? So if we, the town of Ashland included the Pond Street and, excuse me, put the units per acre between 20 and 25, right? At 25 units per acre, you're just a hair above 81 units, which is allowed by right. But you're well below the 120 units that that permit calls for that was issued in 2022. So therefore, you're, it's, you're limiting the risk, right? And you're minimizing the impact. Does that make sense?
I lost you at one point, but, because I'm not seeing 81, I'm seeing 151.
81 is not on there. 81 is the by right within the Pond Street Overlay District, right? And so then, if you took that plot of land, which is about 3.74 acres, and then you said you would allow around between 22 and 25 units per acre, you can increase, you're giving, you're not giving up much, right? You're just saying, okay, in the MBTA district, you can, you can develop, say it's 90 units, right? Well, it's only nine units above what you would be allowed by right, both at 10% affordable.
I think that makes sense. I'm just confused because it says here 159 under the MBTA.
So 159 number?
Yep.
Comes from the total acreage.
For everything.
Per everything.
For both parcels.
With both parcels. You're just talking about 501 Pond.
Correct. Which is going to be about, because you have to think about the both parcels when you're looking at it, because you're counting both as you build up that model.
Yeah.
Right?
So to me, that becomes a very low risk. Like, we, in the spring, we didn't have that information, right?
Yeah, I think we can agree that C is low risk.
A, B, and C are...
Are low risk.
A and B are no risk now. A and B are no risk now. Someday, they can tear them down and rebuild, and we understand that, how, how the zoning goes. C, if they'd said those people walked away at the 25% affordable and their credits, someone can come back and, and build in, like, less than the 120 and in range of what is already by right.
Yep, correct.
So that's extremely low risk. So...
So I guess to me, if, if you do the green and the orange, we're, we're at 41.66 acres, right? So we need to find whatever, 8.43 or whatever, somewhere.
Correct.
And I guess, my question would be, what is the most, we know that the rest of this is somewhat risky. Can we grab thoughtfully sections of the rest in a way that would minimize the risk at those sites to losing the project?
Correct. That is correct. So I, looking at it, you know, UGC has risk, right? If, if, it just depends on risk. We could, we could use UGC area as RTDE. Or we could go to 10 to 60 Main Street, right? 10 to 60 Main Street, 40B, 250 units, right? Then you're looking, you're looking at, obviously, a project in front of the planning board, right? That was at 200 units. I think everyone kind of was starting to kind of wrap their, their head around that number. And now, if you include them, that's 6.9 acres. If you put them in the realm of 18 units per acre, you're at 120, 124. Now, when you bring in the ADDA, right, which is a totally different factors, right? About what's allowed by right and what you can fit in there. And at that point also, you got to think about height, setbacks, parking spaces, how much you can talk about that site. Because really, FAR is almost a pancake model, right? Of what you can stack into that lot, right? And so there's many different complications when you start talking about, about FAR. But you're, you're, you're low risk in my eyes, but you only have 6.9 acres, right? So you're still short of that 60 acre, excuse me, that 50 acres.
Yeah, 1.44.
So you still need to go someplace else. Now, you could either look at Pleasant Street, right? Or you could look over towards UGC. Now Pleasant Street, it's near the train station, right? It's on the other side of the tracks. We do talk about it. But we're only minimize, we're, it's under, right? The ADDA's FAR of 2, right? Which is going to call for mixed use buildings. So I understand where you're coming from, where everyone's coming from about the commercial uses, but you're still slotting it in at a lot, at a spot, right? That is, yeah, it's allowable by right at 15 units per acre. However, if you use ADDA, at the end of the day, you're probably going to get more units on that site under that different bylaw, right? But it's a game of risk. And as, we're just trying to identify all the options right now.
So why can't we, if we're exploring areas in ADDA, why can't, that's exactly why the state changed and allowed commercial. We need to look at that. If we're taking potential commercial areas in our downtown, then we need to look at MBTA zoning that includes that.
I guess I'm going to go back to, well, first of all, it seems like we're moving into the comments section. So I want to make sure, is there anything the select board wants to ask, since we were kind of in the questions phase?
I do.
Yep.
Anna, thank you. I just have one quick question for Peter. It's one of the questions I forgot to ask at our last meeting when we were sitting down, where you folks are tonight. With UGC, with respect to that, they have been permitted. Is there a sunset date for that permit? When it, when it expires or if it ever expires? Because this, this particular situation is now in the land court. And usually with land courts, it's between one to two and a half to possibly three years, depending upon, you know, how the litigation is going to go. So is that permit still accessible for these potential three years, you know, out, out of three years?
Yeah, I can answer that question. The, the correct answer is yes. That permit is still viable. So a, a special permit, well, excuse me, just to back up a second. So just for a facts, right? A comprehensive permit has a tolling period of three years from the date it hits the town clerk's stamp, right? To starting the 20-day appeal period. UGC, that permit, that 40B permit was appealed by the property owner, Mr. Bob Gaynor, on the 19th day of the 20th day of the appeal. That automatically stopped the tolling period. So all the litigation, right, still has stopped that tolling period. Now, depending on which, whatever way the court kind of rules, either yea or nay, if it is, if they go in the direction of the, the developer, right? Then that tolling period restarts. That permit is therefore alive again for three years. Well, become, awakens, I think is a better word. So it awakens, right? And it has a lifespan of three years, moving, moving forward. Does that answer the question, Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Pete.
You got it. No sweat.
Okay. So I think we're at about a half hour mark and maybe we'll open up to more of a conversation with the select board and for the rest of the 15 minutes and comments. Anyone online?
Yolanda has her hand raised. Yolanda, I think I made you a co-host, so please feel free.
Yeah, I, I see that. I can now unmute. Thank you. I, I like the additional work that's been done. I like where you're going with this. My one concern with UGC is a lot of time and energy was spent sort of designing what that would look like, working within the neighborhood, working within the property. And, and I know this is a concern that we've sort of chatted about a couple times is, by changing the zoning, by making it be part of the MBTA, the 3A zoning, they could then change their project. And what, what might that then look like potentially? I, I also do like the idea of including Pleasant Street. After consideration, I know at one of our other meetings, I forget exactly when, I was like, oh yeah, we shouldn't include Pleasant Street. But as I listened to a few more people and a few more residents, it was like, oh, no, it does make sense to include Pleasant Street. So I, I like the way you're going here. And I think for 10 to 60 and 61 Waverly, if we can put zoning in place that might curtail a little bit of the construction, I don't know, I don't think this will, but if we can do that, and/or if we can then use it as part of our number and together, I think that's a good thing. And thank you to the, the subcommittee who worked on this. I know it's been a painstaking thing. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, no, I want to thank, I want to thank, thank you so much. I want to thank Joe and Tricia. But also, I want to really thank you, Alvaro. Alvaro has been the day-to-day, as Joe can attest, and I'll speak for Tricia on that. Alvaro's been the day-to-day guy on this, so thank you, Alvaro.
So I have a question for Yolanda. I think is that we, I'm assuming you wouldn't be trying to exceed the minimum? Or are you, because you mentioned parcels that would bring us over at the minimum potentially? And I, I'm not sure that is an advantage to that?
Minimum of the 50 acres or minimum?
Minimum 50 acres, minimum 1,124 units is close to that, I would think, is what the community would be wanting?
Yeah. Just one clarification. We want to stay within the 56 acres just to maintain seriousness as our contiguous parcel. So just to stay within those 20, 56 acres overall of zoning.
Ideally, you want to stay within 56.
Well, one of the requirements is to have a parcel that is contiguous.
That's big enough.
Yeah, that is contiguous. So that has to be at least 28 acres and 50% of like the overall zoning that you give to the town. So we want to stay within 56.
So if I do the math of A, B, and C, we're at 4166. And then if you go 56, which is our goal, minus 4166, we need 14.34 acres. Is that right? That's what's left to collect somewhere else. So if we're looking to collect 14.34 acres, our choices are D, E, F, and G. And, you know, my, my one thought is that 14.34, originally, when we first met as two boards, the reasoning there that really appealed to me was the idea that our community appreciated if there were areas where projects were either already thought out or in process or about to be built. So for me, what appeals to me, where I want to collect the 14.34, is in areas where there's already a project that has been thoroughly thought out with minimal risk that it's going to be harmed. It sounds like UGC has a bit of risk because it is a, it's not a multifamily, or it's, it's age restricted. It's thought out as age restricted and it's in litigation. So I can see why messing with the zoning there could be high risk. F and G to me are a lower risk in the sense that both of them have high-density proposals with the state as 40Bs. I am having a hard time seeing how any developer would say, oh, I don't want high density anymore. I'm going to go for the lower density by right. That, that kind of doesn't make sense to me. So I personally think F and G, actual projects, thought out, are lower risk than D. And then as far as E, Pleasant Street, I know that there are some voices in our community on that, but there is no actual proposed project that has been analyzed or thought out. And so I view that more as a theoretical concept that until there's a project, I personally would not consider that as part of this dynamic. And I think we can pull our 14.34 acres from F and G with minimal risk.
Can we look at what the commercial part, like that part that we're allowed to do? Like, I, I'm having heartburn giving up, even if you think those projects are going to come, Anna, that are under 40B, right? Which we, we did ask for commercial. We don't know what's going to happen, but like, to just flat out give that up and go to housing, I am not going to support.
No, that's a given, of course. The state now allows MBTA zoning to be commercial. It sounds like that's a great thing to explore. Does the math cha, like, does the math in the blue stuff change if you do commercial?
No, I guess the only thing, I guess the only thing that we have to look is that there is six requirements. I don't, I honestly forgot to like bring the, the paper. Where is that? But it has like six requirements that we have to meet and they have to get pre-qualified. I don't know how long that will take from EOHLC to pre-qualify a district. So I guess we could check in with Lisa if there's any way that, you know, when building the bylaws, you can put something like, like similar to what we were doing with Pond Street with the affordability, saying like, this could be some, this way, upon EOHLC approval, something like that. But I can, I can look for that, those six requirements that mixed use has under MBTA and I can share it.
Are there any other comments or thoughts from the select?
Brandy has her hand up, hand up. Brandy, please.
Hi, guys. Thanks. So I, I, I do think that the, the work that you guys have been doing on this is great. I think we should get credit for what, what is coming down the road with these 40Bs. Because I think, you know, from, from a, you know, I agree with Anna, things that are, that are planned or, and/or permitted, make a lot more sense to include in this. So I, I think, you know, again, you know, A, B, and C are, are, you know, no brainers. And I like the idea of including F and G in there as well. With UGC, you know, I think part of the risk is twofold. One is whether UGC will, you know, potentially change the project. Although I don't think the risk is so much with UGC changing the project. I think the risk is if the project falls apart, what happens to that parcel? So if, if that doesn't go through. So, you know, if, if we have alternatives that meet the needs of MBTA communities without having to include the UGC parcel, I think, I think it is a, the, the lower risk is, is, is the way to go. As far as Pleasant Street goes, I, I do think that, I, you know, I, I, I've heard the same, the same voices that Yolanda has, a few folks. But I, I do think that, you know, the mixed use is, is really important to that corridor. And so, you know, with the zoning that's been put in place, I'm not sure if adding more density on housing for that entire corridor, because it looks like from the, from the chart, there's, there's, you know, potentially 103 more units of housing that would come to Pleasant Street. Is that, that's, that's, that would be the max? Or would that be what it would be zoned for? What would be the, what would be the max potential build out at that density for, for that corridor? Do we know?
So, so just to answer that question, so at the 15 unit per acre, that would be under the, under the MBTA, yes. However, if somebody went under the MB, excuse me, the ADDA bylaw, which is a square, I mean, excuse me, a FAR of 2, then the potential for higher density is there. And so doing calculations, I would predict that a developer would choose the ADDA bylaw to get a higher density net versus the MBTA aligned that district.
Yeah. And I guess just to like, maybe like give a little bit of numbers.
Be able to, to, to use both. It's one or the other.
Correct.
Yeah. And I guess just to like give some numbers, we model it, not really like knowing, but we took like the average size of what a dwelling unit is on right now in downtown Ashland, based on the last projects, 128 Main, 21 Main Street, and 949 Homer. And so when looking at that square footage and giving 13% of commercial, the unit breaker was around 72. Of course, that is like a rough model, but that, that could be like a, a case scenario that like by right, using the ADDA, they could look at 72 units per acre.
Okay. So, so I'm just trying to kind of visualize how, how, how this story kind of plays out with this. If we would include Pleasant Street and MBTA communities, the potential impact would be mitigated by ADDA. So we wouldn't have to necessarily think that we're going to automatically, because I, I, you know, I've, I've said this before and I think, I think it's true. I think housing is going to come to Pleasant Street. I think that, that, that that corridor is really, you know, will be redeveloped, you know, in the next 10 years. And I think that housing is going to come, no matter whether we, we zone it for MBTA or whether we keep it as is, or whether we make changes, you know, once we're done with the comprehensive plan. But, but from a, from a risk standpoint, you would, you would think that this would be a low risk to add to MBTA to get to where we need to be with our acreage? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think that's a matter of opinion. You, you would be taking a purely theoretical property that has no project proposed and you would make it by right. Right now, it's purely theoretical with no project proposed that requires a special permit. So that's the risk.
No, it's by right.
It actually, I think it is by right.
By right, right now, right.
But they, but they do have commercial and I think that's the, so where you can have the potential win-win, if Brandy's right, everything's going to be developed within the next 10 years, is saying, as a fallback, you, you, we could technically be getting less density with MBTA, which no one's going to do, probably. But if, to give us some comfort of that, add the commercial, right, as a consideration, what would that do?
I guess just to clarify, both are by right. Like, just residential, mixed use, both are by right in Pleasant with a higher density under ADDA.
Yes.
So we're just allowing lower density through MBTA.
Through the MBTA, would we, would we force lower density in that area essentially?
Correct.
Okay. But you'd force housing only right now?
So, but what I'm hearing is we could also choose, in exploring how to play with E, F, and G, what I'm hearing is we could explore having an element of commercial be a required element and therefore force lower density through the MBTA zoning. That's what I'm hearing, if I'm hearing it correctly. Are there other comments, Brandy or from the select board? Anything from the planning board? With that, I think to summarize our work, it sounds like there's some interest from both boards in hearing more from the planning department on what this would look like if commercial was added into the mix for E, F, and G, so that we can better understand the dynamics of that. And you had mentioned some requirements that the state might have, so it sounds like it's important to explore those so that we know if this is a real possibility or not before we have further discussion. Before we have further discussion, would would others on both boards agree with that summary? As to what we're, we seem to be interested in exploring a little bit more. I did not hear any consensus as to where we're going, but what I did hear was a curiosity about.
Yeah.
Commercial as part of our conversation.
I don't think we were looking for consensus at all, I think we're just giving, we're just giving an update about what's going on, um. But I I do wanna just make a note that, um, I believe the select board made it official that the town meeting. In November was scheduled for November twentieth, and so with that, we were able to kind of piece back in time. Went to planning board whole public hearings, um, obviously when newspaper ads would have to be put in newspaper. So Alvaro and I made kind of a theoretical or a draft, that was a timeline for the fall. Um, right now, we are scheduled indoor, our working group, uh, Joe, Tricia, Alvaro, and myself. Plan to organize MB MBTA public discussion, where we kind of start to kind of talk about this on a Zoom, we'll have probably a Zoom meeting. Like we did leading up to the uh, spring to annual town meeting, um, and obviously that would be posted and and put out on the, um. On the on the on the wire, on the via via Facebook and all their options, and then, um, we'll be having two of those. And then we will hopefully be coming back into a planning board, uh, select board meeting to kind of start to kind of talk about some of these options. And to build a consensus.
So I guess to clarify, I I did not mean to imply that our goal was to build consensus, what I'm saying is there seemed to be no consensus about. Any particular path other than can we get more information on the commercial? So how do you envision delivering that to the boards in light of the fact that the next thing is the public co- public discussion?
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna, you know, get the facts, and I think at the public discussion, we're gonna talk about those facts. And what those options were and and what the what needs to be done to obviously mend those into this zoning bylaw.
As far as those requirements, it sounds like those requirements could be important, so we may not even be able to meet them.
Yeah, yeah, and I guess we are as kind of like we were thinking of like after this, just kind of start drafting, what is the actual proposal? And like putting down what are the parcels that we're thinking of, including what will be the zoning looking like, all of that. Um, yeah, and I guess we'll just get that information about the commercial. See if those requirements could be met and then include that within the analysis.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the boards?
Two things, one, I think there was consensus A, B, C. Yes, and I want to just reiterate that, thanks, cuz I know this is like, maybe they're. Alvaro's getting to test all his skills, but it's a lot of work and it takes you away from other things, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that covers that particular topic, does the select board need to, um, adjourn? Or you wanna hang out with us for the rest of our meeting?
We we can adjourn, Yolanda, I think.
Yes, I believe we can, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and uh, I think it's just the three of us at this point, so.
McKee is in in person.
Oh, okay, uh, so we have Kinsman.
Aye.
Mignani.
Aye.
Mc uh, Keegan.
Aye.
And Greaves, aye, thank you, that uh, adjourns the select board meeting, thank you planning board for allowing us to attend and participate.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, yep.
You sure you don't wanna stay?
No, that's quite all right, thank you.
Thanks, good night.
All right, on on that note, we're switching, does anybody need a break before we switch gears? All right, we're moving on to item five, review and discuss discussing draft checklist for application status. I believe Kate worked with Peter on this, Kate, do you wanna present?
Um, sure, so I, it's in, it's right behind your second page, I just did a. Giraffe of some things that I think we always have to keep track of, um. I didn't get, I don't know if you were here at meeting Deepa, but I asked if people, so this is just an early draft of the things. The second page, um, Peter added, I had come across this and that was the one I was thinking about, but it's more. Technical for the planning department, I mean, I would, if Peter wants to go something like that, I would. I would say combining them because it makes sense all in one place, right?
Yeah, and I and thank you so much, Kate, for putting this together, obviously, um, but I just found this and I thought, all right, this is pretty good thing, and I just kind of figured. It was something to circulate, obviously continue the conversation, so that's where that comes from, um, and then, um, and obviously, yes.
So is the tab, is the one you add, is that like too much for planning department or is that like?
You know what, I think.
Can I, while while you're looking at it, can I give Deepa and Marcella some context for this, because I don't think they were at the retreat meeting?
Correct.
So just for context, I don't know if you watched the retreat video, in case you didn't, um. What this was, was we had a conversation about how it might be helpful for every project that we have. To start the project off with our own personalized checklist that kind of lives with the project from the start. Where we as a board can be organized and know where the project is and certain things are happening, so that was the idea. This is a document that will kind of live with the project and presumably the board would sort of check in on it every time we met with the developer. Or the applicant and know where we are, and so that was Kate's item. And Peter's was meant to be more on a planning department side to sort of keep things flowing as well to support our checklist. That's the context. Sorry, Peter, you were gonna look at it and comment?
Yeah, no, this is obviously, yeah, it's from a technical standpoint, it's a it's a it's a special permit checklist, it's not within our site plan review. Um, and so obviously this could be kind of amended, this is just an example. It is is it re- is it is it is it rather technical, uh, yes. However, I think it has some good elements into it that needs to be blended together, um, and I, from an idea standpoint, obviously. You know, a lot of these big projects, you know, like third-party GCG, obviously traffic open, does it need it, yes or no? Um, multiple-party technical review stuff, um, these are all great things, and I think that. That a checklist could be kind of developed and kind of put together and, um, created obviously to suit the bill. Um, but I I think both are important, right, both. I I I think both can get you to the same destination, um, but obviously site plan's a little bit different, right, and site plan, um. Lives at the local level, um, timeframes are different, i- i- and so which is something just. Um, which is to think, wha- wha- is something that we should all think about, you know, um. You know, but i- if you look at special, you know, special permits and variances, the town has sixty-five days to open a public hearing. Uh, a lot of towns align their special special permit state statute with their site plan review. Our site plan review states that we have to open the public here within thirty days.
Yep.
I think it could be an amendment, and I would propose, I think I would like to propose the amendment to align site plan approval. With special permit variances, I think it makes, I think that's kind of, it has some common sense grounding into it. Um, especially with the public hearings and notification processes, um, that we do have to update our special permit, excuse me, our site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it our bylaw, our site plan approval bylaw is old, it needs to be updated, um, Alvaro and I actually talked about it today. Um, to align both, um, because, a- as you know, looking through our site plan approval. You know, our site plan approval says to host a a a public fact finding, it doesn't say public hearing. Notification is not spelled out now.
So we should probably be careful, just because it's not on our agenda to kind of discuss, discuss, uh, changes, but.
Yes, to the checklist.
Checklist reminds us of all the things we may wanna clean up, for sure, and. Uh, I will add, Deepa, Marcelo, that when we had the retreat, we agreed about the importance of talking more about things that we wanna clean up in the bylaws, so I think Peter. Which I appreciate is speaking in that spirit, that it's good for us to start to create a list of all the things that we're noticing need to be cleaned up and.
Yeah.
We should probably add that to the list, uh.
And I will say that the 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 special permit checklist that I have here, it doesn't have the third-party review, and it would be very nice for all the planning board members and. Whenever a project to look at this one sheet and say, yep, third-party review, we got, you know, letter one on such and such date and. You know, and and the response came on such and such date from the applicant, and and just to kind of follow that back and forth.
I I that I think I thought this was great, I really liked Kate's draft, um, the way I look at these two documents together is I feel like. Kate's document is more for like the planning board members who are, we're all just kind of trying to visualize where are we? When a project sometimes lives with us for a year, um, and the second document, I see more technical behind the scenes for the planning department to kind of. Track things and deadlines and all of that stuff, which Peter and Peter does well already, and it I see the first piece. Is more kind of for us, for the board, um, any thoughts on that, Deepa, Marcelo, do you guys like this idea?
I do like the idea, but looking at some of our projects, past projects that's been a year, year and a half. Maintaining a document that will need continuous updates for the life of it, for example, you may have. Five design review committee meetings and having that info kind of updated during the process. The second paper, uh, irrespective of the content, has very clear milestones along the journey of. The checklist, and I feel like we need to get that here so that it's very clear, we also know as a board that. We are kind of hitting a milestone and not have an open-ended project that has a life of year and a half in front of planning board.
Maybe like a dates column?
Yeah, like something that kind of keeps us in check and make sure like if GCG may have multiple times reports going back and forward, so. Um, you have the big topics, but I feel like to maintain that on the long run, need. A little more crisper ads, I'm not sure how that is, because this second document definitely has very clear. Um, milestones, if it makes sense.
Kate, do you wanna take a stab at maybe editing it a little bit for our next meeting with some?
I mean, so I put it in blue, right, that the shot clock important, right, that's the date, and that can be rolling date if they agree to extensions, but otherwise, that is the date. Based on when it's filed, but no, I'm sorry, when the public hearing is open, not when it's filed, so you have the one twenty or the one eighty.
So I think what Deepa's suggesting, which I can kind of appreciate, is maybe a a third middle column of dates. So that if you have multiple, you can almost track, oh, technical review is such and such date, design review meeting is these three dates. So that the document becomes like a story, where you look at one piece of paper and you can see what happened when, is that kind of what you're thinking? It almost becomes more chronological, that's what imagining you're looking for.
Correct, and I'm assuming this is kind of maintained by the planning board office versus each one of us maintaining.
I I'm thinking, I was thinking the clerk, so.
Not, no offense, but I think Kate, if you created it, I think you should as the clerk.
Like, I'm trying to, to be honest, create something sustainable, right, so like, I won't be the clerk forever. Um, not gonna be on the planning board forever, so I I guess so, I guess, yes, I would absolutely do it as clerk, because. I would be doing some of this, I find when we get at the end of the projects, we're scrambling saying, oh, that's open, oh crap, there's four things on that one and we didn't. And I'm trying, I would be doing this for myself.
Not wanna create extra work for the planning department, I feel like if the planning board is drafting a checklist that may live with us as a planning board, maybe Kate. Does other things or doesn't become a clerk, I think we should take responsibility for things like this.
Yeah.
Um, and again, they're not technical, these are things to keep us kind of moving, so. That would be, if Kate is willing to do that, unless there's concerns about that from the board. If you're comfortable with that, that that to me seems fair, we're we're not adding work on our staff.
Yeah, I'm happy to work with Kate, cuz I think it makes sense, at the end of the day, it's it, I think it's best practice, um, you know. It's best practice for myself, it's best practice for the board, um, and I think hopefully it would make things. Um, and and I think at the end of the day, it's a low-hanging fruit, and it's easily obtainable to take care of and to maintain and, um. You know, even if, you know, to have a sheet like this, and, you know, I think we can all say, okay, you know, as as you get your binders, right? Uh, it's in there, right, and you and you kind of know what's new, what's not, and it's a way to filter through all the information and, um. Look, I think we're gonna have a lot of, we have the possibility of, I don't, you know, having some bigger projects come up and, um, and we'll kind of go from there.
Marcelo, do you wanna add anything before we move on to the next topic?
Uh, I I don't have much to add, I I I agree with what Deepa said, um, I think in principle, the 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 list. Makes sense, and it's kind of an organizational tool, um, I like the idea of, uh, if 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 we. If we are going to keep it current for every application, uh, maybe inside the binders, um, the first thing that should be for any applications be that list. So that everybody knows, uh, where the project stands.
Sounds great, I mean, I'm imagining we we can almost like be like, hey, where are we with this, let's look at the checklist. It's a good way to like remember where we are and reset, sometimes I take notes at meetings and then I kind of forget or. I'm like, I can't read my chicken scratch.
No, I, you know, it's funny, even the last one, you know, we're dealing with the cell tower, right, obviously, we're not hearing them tonight because. You know, a couple of people are absent, no, obviously, no, no harm, no foul, but even with those cell towers, right, you have a sixty-day shot clock regarding the federal FAA regulations. So therefore it changes a little bit, and obviously we obtained, uh, you know, from the last meeting, I obtained a a extension. Uh, which I filed with the town clerk and I did all that stuff, but it's easier if you guys have, if if the planning board has it in front of them and everyone's on the same page. So, kudos to Kate for putting this together.
So are you looking that I, we should take a stab at sort of combining these, like the details you need, or just keep them separate?
I would keep them separate.
I'll keep them separate, cuz I think they're two different things, obviously, this is more site plan review, um, and to tell you the truth. If you keep site plan review happy, the the special permits, the big thing regarding special permits is the sixty-five days. You know, the 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 chapter forty, um, forty-eight, section eleven, which is the notification processes, that I follow by heart, right? And so those are the big elements that I do really see, uh, on on this page. Um, and it's always obviously getting out to other departments and the decision, and, um, these are things that obviously are just kind of, at this point. Branding on my brain, I hate to say it.
I'm sure over time we'll amend this as we go, it sounds like all we're, all we're asking you to add, Kate, is a. Dates column where we can start to track things as they happen by date, so that we know kind of where we are, um. With that, um, we're gonna move on to discussion of housing bond bill and accessory dwelling u- AGU regulations. Not to kind of create deadlines for us, but I think we should try to, um, try to end our meeting by nine thirty if we can, we're aim for that. If possible, if if not sooner, so, uh.
Yeah, so this.
Let's give it a shot.
Just to jump into it, obviously, um, a lot of information's been coming out, I did print everybody the the bond bill, um. Uh, which is right here.
Oh.
Uh, this also came hot off the press, I haven't even had a chance to read it, it's advisory from town council regarding the Affordable Care Act. Um, I've been doing some research on this a little, I I've been able to kind of get some stuff over the wire, um. Excuse me, over e- email the internet, right, um, about what's going on, but, um. In the grand scheme of things, um, the biggest piece is in the housing bond bill, they add two sections. That are applied to, um, accessory dwelling units, right, and that's in section seven on page seventy-five of one eighty-one. Um, that leads into section eight on page seventy-six of one eighty-one, um, those two item, this this one big item in particular. Uh, accessory dwelling units, um, now moves accessory dwelling units, which is a. A a accessory dwelling as as a definition off of 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 line sixteen seventy-three. Is a self-contained housing unit exclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot. And that's key is on the same lot, right? Um, as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements. That, number one, maintains a separate entrance either directly from the outside or through the entire hall. Excuse me, through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling, um, that speaks to attached dwellings. Um, sufficient to meet the requirement of the state building code for obviously, uh, safe EGAS. Number two, is not larger in gross floor area than half the gross area of the principal dwelling. Or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller, so number two limits accessory dwelling unit to nine hundred square feet. Um, and or if that would be smaller than half of the, um, gross area square footage of the house. Per se, if you have a house that is just, for the sake of this conversation, fifteen hundred square feet of livable area. Um, on that same lot, you would able be, you'd be able to build a accessory dwelling unit of seven hundred fifty square feet. Um, number three, it says, subject to any additional parking restrictions that may be imposed by municipality, included but not limited to. An additional size restriction, restrictions on prohibiting of short-term rental, um, and I did pull the definition of short-term rental. Um, and I can, we can kind of talk about that, as defined in, uh, section one of chapter sixty-four G, provided that however, no municipality shall. Unreasonably restrict the creation of rental and or accessory dwelling units that that is not a short-term rental. Section eight is following, obviously, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, um, but at the. Um, but at the end of the day, it is key to note that, um, the planning board, we deal in this realm a little bit. Um, in section three, it's the list of exceptions. Um, it's also known as kind of the Dover Amendment, uh, that's how it all started out of obviously churches and schools are exempt from zoning laws. Um, there's many other things that the latest that was added, uh, was solar. Obviously, solar energy, solar energy facilities, green energy facilities, uh, do not need to obtain, uh, uh, a buy-by local zoning code. Um, what they did is they added accessory dwelling units to section three. So it is a, uh, by right, um, exempt zoning use, um, for any, um, single-family zoning district.
So no setbacks?
So no, you can, nope, there is setbacks are included.
Rules though about.
You can have reasonable, you can have reasonable.
Reasonable setbacks, um, within this and as you get deeper into it, um, the state, the, you know, the, um, the E O H L C, um, they are going to provide guidelines. This was signed into law last week, um, as we kind of dig through this, um, but, yes.
No, I was just going to say that the legal document is this, the memo from council is very helpful. I, I think we do need to be aware on page three that, um, the portion of the act regarding ADUs is effective in a hundred and eighty days, which will be February second, twenty twenty-five. So that's our chance. Until February second, twenty twenty-five, we have to consider how we want to do this. Because without it, our current bylaw, which is not by right, is basically null. And anybody in our community can propose an ADU and we will have nothing to guide us. And so while there's no quote-unquote emergency, there kind of is importance for us to address it by February second so that we have, we've done our best. So I personally would love to see this be done in our, in our fall meeting.
But quick, quick question, Anna, uh, what, what, what does that mean? Um, and, and, and I looked at what was circulated, but, um.
So the existing, oh, oh.
I wasn't able to even send it out.
Yeah, so for, I can just.
That, that's fine, but I did read, uh, I, I did read the, the document that Alvaro sent when, when it was signed into law. Uh, when, when you said, Anna, that, um, that we need to act to address or amend our zoning to, to respond to this, um, is, is, what, what, what it is that, that, that can be done? I mean, if I understand what Peter just said, uh, it's almost into a part of the, of the law that, um, that basically bypasses what we can do.
Well, we, the, the law does allow us to create reasonable regulations. So we have the opportunity as a planning board, for example, to think about what should the ADUs look like? What should be setbacks? What are reasonable setbacks? Do we want to create some guidance for our community as to what they should look like or what they should be like? We, the state allows us to do that. Without that, it's pretty much a.
Well, I also think it would probably be.
undefined reality.
Important to decide, help the community decide or, but if, if we're, if there will be restrictions on short-term rental or not. And I know at least in board discussions, people were talking about that. Um, so that would be really important because again, otherwise there's, people can do whatever and, and then you have short-term rentals all around, which as you pointed out, they're already here, but some reasonable restrictions. And the other reason I asked to have it on the agenda because I think it's really important is that if we can work with, uh, executive office of liberal communities and find out what we could do to have those count as affordable. Because this is like sort of low hanging fruit, right? Developers get subsidies for affordable housing. This is potentially a way for like homeowners to get and stay in their house. Like I, I built, I, you took out your home equity, you built it, you're an older couple, you live in that, you rent out your house, you're allowed to. That's the law, but it may be both providing affordable housing. And it certainly will provide housing, like not massive apartment buildings that the community has said over and over again, I'd prefer not to have. We didn't say no housing. We said I'd prefer not to have massive apartment buildings. So there, there is a way to get them to count affordable. And if we are trying to get a bylaw soon, I don't know how that, like that could maybe be an add-on, but I, I want that to be part of the conversation because it is possible.
I mean, it depends how we want to do it. We can do it in phases, like we can, we can do the easy stuff first, which is not so easy. But like from what I understand, Tricia has done some of those. She's done ADUs for clients. So I think we have some expertise, if you will, on the planning board as to what might be a reasonable restriction and, and what, what could an ADU look like in our community? I would suggest we start there and then, you know, things like affordability and incentives for affordable and how to count it and like short-term rentals, that feels a little bit more complex. It might take more time to figure out, but at the very least, like we should be able as a board by February second to come up with like, what should an ADU look like in Ashland? Is there such a thing as an Ashland ADU that's reasonably?
I, I, I totally agree with what Anna just said.
And give it a shot. Keep it simple because if we want to try to do it for town meeting, all we have to say to our community is the law now allows it by right. Whatever we have in our bylaw disappears on February second and pretty much anybody in the community can kind of go with the flow. So why don't we try to create something minimalistic that works quickly so that we feel some certainty and consistency of what these ADUs are like? And leave the hard stuff for later when we have more time.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred, ten percent. I just want to, obviously, this is so new. We're all kind of digging through it, right? Um, I just wanted, just to a point, I don't want anybody to think, you know, they're gonna, the ADU is going to be built on top of their property line.
Oh, right.
Right now, in the, you know.
With reasonable.
Correct, in residential A, right, in resident, all of our, our, our zoning bylaws, you know, we do have setbacks, right? So we do have setbacks existing today on our books that any ADU has to abide by, right? And so, um, I just want to make that point of clarification that, um, because I think there is some confusion, there's some fear. It's a huge change.
Yeah, like I said, how they look, not necessarily setbacks.
How they look a hundred percent, right? Um, design criteria, height, all that type of stuff, you know? Um, what do we want? Yeah, we, we can kind of go, go in that direction. Uh, but I just want to be clear that we do have bylaws, we do have some elements that are there, they're in place, that it's not going to be, um.
We're not going to suddenly have massive, uh, strange things on our, on our property line.
Just want to clarify that for the meeting.
It's the ability to do it by right versus through.
A special permit process, right? And, and just as a note, as you further, as you dig further into this, um, which I'm sure everyone will, um, you know, there's no more owner occupancy issues, um.
It can be anybody.
It can be anybody. Um, obviously, if it's a, if you can rent both, you, you know, you can put ADU in and, and rent that and obviously the principal structure, you can rent as well. Um, so it's a massive change, um, and I just want to say the state of Maine, it just went through this process not too long ago. I believe they had a very similar law that went into effect, uh, December thirty fir-, excuse me, January first of this past year, um, where they did have, they, they, they dealt with the same issue. Uh, learning that at planning conference in the fall, um, that was something that kind of, it, it, it's a takeaway point. Uh, but yes, there are many other elements, um, just not ADUs. I can tell you right now, it gets into, um, you know, lots that were created and/or, um, of ten thousand square feet in size and at fifty thousand, if seventy-five thousand square feet. Um, it's an exemption to the merger act, obviously, um, which is, there's already, that, that's helped me out with one conversation that I've already had last week with a gentleman in Ashland, um, where he was looking at a variance, right? And so there, that's a billable lot right there now, um, maybe in effect. You know, so this is a major change. Everyone's kind of trying to, um, digest and take in what all the changes are. Um, but is there low hanging fruit regarding protect, you know, for what to do? I'm sure there's more to come, you know, in, in the very, you know, in the coming weeks and, and that will obviously presented to, um, to, to all boards and committees. Uh, just for a fact, you know, looking at this bill, and not just to keep on continuing to talk, but this bill was for five point one billion dollars. Um, two billion dollars was to the public housing modernization. Hundred fifty million to the public housing decarbonization. Eight hundred million to the affordable housing trust fund. Four hundred and twenty-five million to the housing sustainable, uh, stabilization and investment trust fund. And it continues on, uh, two hundred and seventy-five million to the sustainable and green housing initiatives. Um, so yeah, this is obviously a huge deal and it's a lot of money. Uh, and it's, and it's going, and it's meant to help housing and obviously loosen the, um, loosen up the, the current market, obviously.
What I was going to add is that, uh, looking at the legal memo, um, it's very clear that, um, it leaves a lot of room for communities to regulate Airbnbs because the way it's phrased is no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of accessory dwelling unit that is not a short-term rental. So it's basically inviting communities to say, hey, use this for affordable housing or use this for housing in your community, but feel free to regulate short-term use. Feel free. So I look at that as an opportunity so that even if we don't do the Airbnb regulation thing at town meeting, we should highlight that for the public. So the public is not scared. The public is excited. They're aware that, hey, this is an opportunity. This is a lot of money coming from the state to allow you to build something for your parents or for your kids or for, or to rent long-term and make some money because it, it's really hard to afford to live these days with inflation. And don't worry, we're not going to become crazy Airbnb land because the statute allows us to regulate for, for short-term rentals. So I think this is really exciting and we should, um.
It's, it's a definition.
Yeah, and we should be able to, um, we should be able to, in my opinion, make this really exciting for the town of Ashland. Like, we should think about how to market this to our community so that they're excited about it because I think it's exciting to be able to build nine hundred square feet accessory dwelling units if you have that opportunity and rent them long-term or, or have someone in your family live there if you want. It's a really incredible opportunity, I think, for a lot of our families.
And this is just, you know, these, just a note, these are lots that, that are right now, single-family houses. You know, there are some questions that have come up that right now are two-family units, uh, indoor three-family units. They're saying, hey, is this a way for me to get an extra lot? That, that's not the case. This is a, a lot that has one principal structure on it. This is owned, single-family. Uh, single-family is allowed by right. Um, and, and obviously, I agree, it's very exciting for Ashland, for the state, obviously, it's a huge change. I don't think it's, I don't think every lot down Main Street, uh, um, is going to have an accessory dwelling unit that's owned, single-family. Um, you know, thinking not just in Ashland, how it affects the region. It's a much, i- i- it's a, it's a, it's a whole kind of concept, right? And I think, um, through so many conversations I've had over the years about ADUs and permitting ADUs by special permits, um, it is a huge change. It is exciting, but it's not met for every homeowner, you know, for every parcel, so.
It's just one element of a bigger picture of affordable housing or housing. I think the reason it excites me for Ashland specifically is we have these sections of town that are still kind of rural where you have single-family homes. I can think of a friend whose property is more rural than mine. I live in a condo and she has, you know, a single-family home in some land. She absolutely could put one of these on her property and you know what? With the cost of living, et cetera, she may be tempted to sell that rural land to a developer for multifamily housing, otherwise. And so now this gives her the option to put this unit on it, rent it long-term, make some money, be able to potentially stay in Ashland longer, keep the property more rural longer. I look at this as a solution to a problem, which is we're being somewhat targeted for really heavy development and this is a different way to do housing that in theory can keep us smaller and more green relative to our rural areas. So that's sort of my, my piece of it. Um, I think it's, it's just one element, but it's a way to keep us, um, affordable.
Anyone else want to add anything before we move on to the next topic? And we have reports from board members and our town planner, comprehensive plan, Kate?
We have upcoming marathon meeting next week at the library. So it's, um, six, six P M. to nine P M. And it'll be kind of the final draft, interim draft, I'm calling it because she said it's iterative of the vision and the goal themes and we are going to start working on goals. So I believe I read the email today after that meeting that will be published for the public to start commenting. And it's a short window. I believe it's only a couple of weeks of public comment, but we want to get people, hopefully make sure they know about it so they can comment.
Thank you, Kate. Anything relative to design review or sustainability or CPC, Peter?
Uh, I can't, no, I, I don't really have anything on that. We, sustainability was bit, has been meeting, uh, I think they met. Samantha, um, has been really busy, uh, doing some green, some, some great stuff. I know our sustainability coordinator in the city committee met with Energize Ashland. They was looking at a pretty good soul, uh, uh, community solar project. So that was pretty exciting stuff, um, coming through, uh, indoor from our sustainability kind of department. Other than that CPA have no items, Metro West Re, Metro West, they're taking the summer off. And I think you've heard enough about MBTA communities.
Okay. Can you report some planning topics?
Uh, I know we're still working through all the processes. Uh, the biggest item that we continue to kind of follow up on is the economic impact tool. Um, obviously, we're still working with Framingham State, Merck, uh, Metro West Re, uh, Metro West, um, uh, Enviro, Economic Research Center, um, as they continue on. Obviously, um, in those conversations about making a tool, not just for Ashland, but for other communities within the region, uh, which is obviously exciting. I think at the, after the last meeting, I did follow up with planning board members and I did send out the Merck, um, regional report, which is actually, which was great, which is full of great information, um, which I hope everyone was able to review and take a look at. They do some great, uh, great work over at Framingham State, the Rams.
I started taking a peek at it and I was going to do like a short summary for the board in case other people don't have time to read it. Um, I can try to do that for next time. Any planning office updates?
Uh, nothing too in particular. I think the biggest thing is MBTA stuff is just, you know, fast and furious. And we're really starting to, we want to get this thing kind of moving and, um, you know, and, and on the right track and, you know, that has been a big thing. Last Thursday, I did go to the mass, uh, lawyers, Mass Municipal Lawyers Association meeting out in Sturbridge. And I did kind of, uh, kind of review, obviously, it was good dust-up on the MBTA, what they're looking for. Uh, I can tell you right now, all, I think it was forty-seven communities, um, at the, at the town level, cities and towns that passed zoning, um, at the previous, uh, spring town meetings. They're, they're waiting their, um, approval of their zoning from the attorney general's office. So as, as Kate mentioned earlier, the wheels of local government do move slow. And so obviously, I think we just need to be in a position to get ready for the fall and, and have something that is, uh, suitable. But obviously, um, I feel we have a good plan, we have a good bylaw and we'll be able to obtain that goal.
And then we're going to talk about our upcoming meetings for August twenty-second. Is there anyone who cannot make it? Just so we can get a sense of who's going to be here. That's our next meeting.
I think that's going to be a full board.
Great.
Hopefully, uh, we're going to reorg, I think we're going to reorganiz- reorganization.
All right.
On that agenda, uh, it's the first time we've been able to meet a full board in a long time.
Great.
Um, I think, um.
So we'll get ready for that.
Um, I think we're, we have to, Kathy Rooney applied to be, um, re- activate, uh, re, she applied to a position on the design review committee. We will hear her, um, application and do a talent review, reviewed her talent review form. Um, and then we will have the cell tower, which will be the, um, the public hearing.
So it sounds like a fairly light agenda. Maybe, uh, we can come back to the checklist if you're going to edit it.
I think it should be a light agenda. I think we can come back and, uh.
Finalize the checklist.
Finalize it. Hopefully, we'll have more information on this housing. I think maybe we'll, we can have a ten-minute update on this. I think within two minutes, I think within next two weeks, a lot of information will continue to, you know, roll out every day, something new coming over the wire, uh, regarding this, this Affordable Housing Act and.
Maybe you can show us that main bylaw that you found.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll try to dig out the main law. I went to the, this past fall, I went to the Northern New England Planning Conference. Um, and which, which represents the, the American Planning Association of Maine, Vermont and, and New Hampshire. Um, and, uh, and obviously Maine and all New England's, just not Massachusetts. It's, it's all. It's all New England, you know, cities and towns are facing challenge, you know, housing, right? We have the, we're the oldest housing stock in the nation. Massachusetts and Middlesex County alone have some of the most expensive housing in the country. So yeah, it's a, it's a tall, it's a tall task, it's a tall hurdle. And it's going to take a lot of different tools to kind of, to correct or, and or right the ship.
And that leaves us with our minutes. We're reviewing the June 27th, 2024 minutes. These should be in your binder. I did not have any changes.
Line one or two, I think the parking space dimension is not correct.
Nine by two? What do you think it should be?
Nine by 20.
Nine by 20, all right. There you go. Nine by two is very small. Maybe, maybe could fit my motorcycle. It's a small motorcycle. All right. Any other changes? Marcelo, any, any changes? Is Marcelo still there?
Yeah, I'm here. No, I do not, I do not have any changes.
Okay. Can I have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the June 27th, 2024 minutes with the amendment on parking space.
And is there a second?
A second left.
Anorol call vote?
Deepa and Kedai.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And unless there's anything further, I will close the meeting of the Ashland Planning Board at 9:12 PM. I think that's an hour and a half meeting, folks, shortest one we've had. Congratulations.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Oh, yes. May I have a motion for that? I got excited.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second left.
Anorol call vote?
Deepa and Kedai.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Still an hour and a half. And we close. Thank you.